It's magical, huh? Hello, everyone. I want to bring this meeting of the Landale City Council to order. I'm going to ask the city clerk to give the roll call.
Mr. Mayor, you want to do the flag salute first, different order?
Yep, flag salute is first, followed by the roll call. Councilwoman Cuevas.
Please stand, remove your hats if you are wearing one, right hand over your hat part, repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now let's have the roll call.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. Mayor Protem Kearney, Councilmember Cuevas, Councilmember Suarez, Councilmember Talavera,
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present except for Councilmember Suarez at this time.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. This is a special meeting to open and reveal the items that were placed in the City of Landale Time Capsule in December 20, 2000. Before we do that, let's watch a brief video from the year 2000.
And when you come in here and look at the Time Capsule, you'll think many years from now when they open that, they're going to say, "What was that for?" No, we opened ours a few months ago, from 30 years prior to now. We did that. Astroturf? But it was there. We had a lot of fun doing it and a lot of memories. A lot of memories of a lot of good people. I hope we remember the location of that Time Capsule.
All right, let's give that a round of applause. Okay, now I'd like to take this time to thank the Public Works Department, our cable television staff, and our city hall renovation contractor for their hard efforts in finding and removing the Time Capsule. Let's go down in front of the table and have the Time Capsule open. Now Jack is going to open the Time Capsule. We're going to see what's in this baby. We trust him with the, um... It's nice and secure, just like at the bank. Good job, Jack. You're pretty handy with that screwdriver. Now each one of us, councilmembers along with the city clerk, will pick up, will pick out a few items from the Time Capsule and identify them, followed by the next councilmember. I would go first. The City of Landale Sheriff's Station Service Building, dedicated June 1997. Oh, you know what? This is, this is the album and it's signed by, well, the first page is signed by Supervisor Yvonne Braffrey Burke, the 2nd District. Matter of fact, all these are blank. She was only signatory. She was only signatory on here. Okay. Next item is the City of Landale Annual Budget. 2000, 2001 Annual Budget. I'm sure it's compelling reading. I don't know, what service organization is this from? Get a good shot of this. Some, some service organization. I'm not really sure, because it just says Landale. Maybe it's from the city. No, it's from the city. I wasn't around then, so I didn't get one. I don't know what these are about. Oh, this is a newsletter. No, no, it's not a newsletter. It's, um, I don't know, I guess it's like... Ladies and gentlemen, here we go. I don't know what this item is, but it's, it's nice and glossy though, in its own fancy paper. It's like a folder, right? Yeah, so you can put your, your school papers in there. The heart of the South Bay. It has like, um, small city means expanded, um, personal ser, personalized service, affordability. It's like, yeah, it's a, a sales presentation, basically. Um, "Come join us, the South Bay, the City of Landale awaits." I guess it's like a marketing brochure. Yeah. "Affordability, Landale, the heart of the South Bay." Oh, yeah, remember this? All right, let's bring Mayor Protem, Pat Kearney.
Mayor, council, if you could use the microphone so the folks at home can hear you. Just a reminder.
Okay, I'm up next. Let's start with this beautiful, uh, Londo, Londo City Hall features news, this is a newsletter from Mayor Hoffman, August 23rd, 2000, at the Londo Park Country Club. I think we're having our, one of our dinners or events there, but it's from, like I said, August 23rd, 2000. And here's Hawthorne Boulevard Revitalization Project Design, Final Design Development Report. And it was done by Parsons Transportation Group, and I think they glued the pages together. Oh, it's one page. One page. Oh, here we go. And here is a Landale Tribune dated December 30th, 1999. I was a young man then, 1999. Robert, there's the pin, the 40th Anniversary Pin. Let me see if there's good articles in I can read to you, if I can read. Oh, man, it's all small lettering. Oh, it says, "Looking back through Londo's history," and it has the founding date of the city. Londo celebrates 40th year. They have, uh, "Did you know?" Hawthorne Boulevard renamed, then and now City Hall. Oh, the City Hall was the old City Hall on 147, it looks like, then the new one, then the Model T Fords. I was around for those two. And then the new one, and then the Medical Plaza they built, the old ground, and then they had the old community center, and I believe is Jade Adams Park remodeled. Anyways, good reading. If you have time, look it up. And then I'm going to do these all together because it's all the same. These are Stradinsky Plans for Hawthorne Boulevard, adopted Phase 3, Phase 4, Bike Patrol, Landale, we had all that, remember that way back when? I think that's when the lieutenant was on a bike. He was a deputy sheriff, because he was trying to catch me one day, but never could. And then we had the new Commercial Assistant Program. So these all together, I'll do one more, and then I'll pass it on. And this is Ride Down Councilmember Cuevas and Talavere, the 4th July Travaganza. I don't believe it was that losing her high school. Family Fun, was it London? Here we have the Fourth July Travaganza, Halloween Haunt Carnival, uh, the Landale Beat, Dan McKenzie Community Gardens, Landale Special People, which I was a member of that way back with Nancy Martins, and there was quite a few of those for our physically and mentally challenged children. Time for Tots Kids. That's a better Landale than we get now. Uh, kids sports, Pee Wee Sports. Anyway, we have a lot of sports in there. And with that, I'll pass it on to the next councilmember, Mr. Councilman Cuevas. Cuevas, Cuevas, Cuevas.
All right, let's see what we have in here. 2000, 2001 Budget. And let's take a look and see, why does, we had two budgets? Oh my goodness, okay, it's the same one. Same years. So that didn't count. It's the drawings for Hawthorne Boulevard. Landale welcomes you to the heart of the South Bay. These are the plans for the City Hall, January 1970, Landale City Hall. And it actually has a gold seal that we all were talking about. This is the seal, the proper seal. We could open it up, yeah. Right there is the, it shows the, you want to hold it this way? It says Civic Center Complex is, is future dream, council approves initial site plan for City Hall. All right. What else do we have in here that's? I'm going to ask for assistance. All right, this is a banner that says, "Landale celebrates 40, 1959 through 1999." It's very dusty, so, here you go, Dan. Thank you. And one last thing would be, let's see, let's see. Let's see, First Amendment Agreement, First Amended Agreement for Joint Use of Gymnasium between City of Landale and Landale Elementary School District, signed, let's see, July 10th of 2000. And it's Councilmember Talavera's turn.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm glad to see that our Time Capsule fared a lot better than Londo High School's in 1979. Do you know, you remember that? No? Okay, so we built, we did a, a Time Capsule, put it in Senior Square, Senior Circle, and when they dug it up, it was all filled with water and everything was wet, but this is, this is great. So let's see what we have in here. Um, we have an article from the Tribune about the new gym that was slated for next summer, dated August 10th, 2000. And here's one very appropriate, uh, City of Londo, Angel Tree Ceremony, this Friday. Okay, so here we are. Our traditions still continue. It's from 2000, so we have that. And... We have some pictures here. Let's see if I can make sense of what's going on here. There's a pest control, um, re, uh, remodeling of the City Hall. Okay. Planting trees, yeah, uh-huh. And I remember talking to Rhonda one time after, after the City Hall, about the gold coins that they gave for the dedication. So that was a treat. I remember standing in line, the line going around the building, and everyone wanted the gold coin. So, and then after the gold coins were gone, we gave up plastic ones. So you snooze, you lose. So got, got to get here early. Oh, speaking of the gold coins, here they are. Oh, look at that. City of Landale, California, 20th Anniversary. Okay, so here's one bronze coin now. And let's see. And here's a couple of pins. Uh, here's a pin for the Neighborhood Watch for Londo. And let me just do one more thing, and then I'll pass the microphone on to our city clerk. And here's a couple pins celebrating Londo's 40th year. So, there they are. All right. Oh, okay. And this is, uh, leave that one there.
Okay, there you go. All right. Let's see. We have a bunch of business cards. So, looks like Public Works Supervisor, all, all the councilmembers, so Harold Hoffman, Larry Rudolph, Nancy McKee, Virginia Rhodes, and Neil Roth, all in here. And Rutten and Tucker, the attorneys at law from that time. See, we have... I think these all go together. City of Landale's Schedule of Salary and Benefits, Central Management Employees. Okay. We have another pin of the logo, the city logo. The word, the one with the Bird of Paradise in it. Okay. And then we have some pictures, dedication of the Han Fire Station. That's what they all are from, with some of the councilmembers. I see Larry and Nancy, Neil, Virginia, and Harold. Okay, and then... Let's see. Parking permit for the dedication of the Sheriff's Department Service Center, and dignitary parking permit for the same, so two different ones. And then I'll do one more and I'll give it back to the mayor. We have a brochure for the Landale Beat Service Brochure, effective June 1st, 2000. So... Says how much it costs, the hours of operation, where it goes, I think, the schedule of it. So, there we go. You're welcome. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Okay. She asked, "How much was it?" Does it, does it say? Does it, does it say? How much is the fare? How much was the fare? You guys are getting like me. Okay, so we have a newsletter from the Sentinel Valley Union High School District. Look at that. Ooh, ah. Innocent, oh, it's, it's in Spanish. Oh, okay. You guys remember these, um, folks? I know everyone except, um, one fella in this picture. The city council. What, what year was this? You know? It doesn't say on the back. There's Harold Hoffman. Okay. Yeah, it was part of the, the open house and dedication of the Longdale Sheriff's Station, Service Station. When is that? Oh, nineteen ninety-seven, June. Okay. Um, followed by, uh, an open house and dedication, um, program of the forest, of the, uh, Service Station of the Sheriff's Department. That was in, um, June 14th, 1997. Daily Breeze article, "Home Sales Slow in State." Really? Calif, California? Let me, let's see. How does Longdale fare on this list? Okay, Ju, June 2000, they have Longdale listed at 170,000, up 8.1% from June 1999. Guess how much it was in 1999? One, no, 1,057, 157,000. How much is, is it today? A lot more than that, huh? Yeah, that, that's true. So here's the, um, the housing element, some papers from the, the housing elements. I'm sure it was cer, I'm sure it was certified. And then what is this? An ordinance of the city council, amending chapters, blah, 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 of the municipal code. Oh, regarding compensation of elected officials. Okay, open that, open that up for me. While she's doing that, just, uh, a business card from the architect, and, um, some, it's like a meal ticket. As a special guest, join us at 8:00 PM for a preview, preview of the facilities and lighting, and the light snacks and refreshments. But it doesn't say where. I don't know what event that was. So here's an article, um, in the real estate section of... Is it the LA Times or the Breeze? Okay. LA Times, okay. And it says, "Double vision in tiny Longdale established nearly a decade ago. A third of the lots have two houses. Residential renovations has become widespread." I wonder, is this the same, the same one that we just hit? Um, yeah, yes, it looks like it's the same. Ooh, that's strong. That painting is strong. I think I'm, I look lightheaded right now. Okay. Well, that's the capsule. Give it a round of applause. Now I'm gonna walk over to this table. Now, some of these items were, are collected, that's gonna be in the, the next capsule. Okay? We're gonna put these items in the next capsule of, um, 2025 capsule on display here, and the plaques are being removed, and a new dedication plaque will be installed in the foyer, making the location of 2025 time capsule. The new time capsule will be opened in 25 years. When is that? Quick math. 2050. Bing, 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 bing. Give that man a prize. Okay, so if anyone wants to come up, you can just take a look at this, uh, these items, they're gonna be in a time capsule. I got my new suit on. Just in time, right, to make the time capsule. I'm gonna ask my, uh, the, the, the city, um, council and our clerk to join us for a photo. Oh, where we going? Ladies and gentlemen, we're, we're joined tonight by, um, our former city clerk, Paula Hartwell. Wave your hands, Paula. We haven't seen you in a while. Thank you for coming out. And we're also joined by former council member Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman. Thanks for joining us. All right, well, that's gonna do it for tonight's, um, presentation. I'm gonna, um, invite everyone for, to a reception to have some cake, pastries, and refreshments in the lobby. How about that?
Can you adjourn?
Yeah, we adjourn.